America, in the Republic, we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, and with justice for all.
Call the Public Safety Committee to order establish a form of road call, please.
Ms. Lacy.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Item number four, the police department report. Chief Le.
Yeah, I know.
We didn't even let you.
Huh?
I said, you didn't even let you.
I was like, it's been like last month. Really, and Public Safety Committee in order to vote you on yourself and City Council, well, back here, put out a police department, I'll just account for the month of October. All, yes, when I, the Port Allen Fire Department, um, Assistant Public Lieutenant Times, had twelve disturbances, had nine deaths, had eight remaining complaints. We had, uh, eight information calls, incidents by location, northeast of Fourth Street, we had twenty-six, northwest of Fourth Street, ninety, southeast of Fourth Street, forty-three, southwest of Fourth Street, and thirty-one, thirty-four, and, uh, south of I T. And we had twelve arrests, uh, four disturbing pieces by physical encounter, one failure to report the car or certain felonies, two battered date partner, one simple assault, one remaining, one theft, one indecent behavior before the juvenile, one possession of firearm or carrying, one aggravated acts, one fugitive warrant, uh, one dis- destruction of firearm and city members. We had twenty, uh, twenty seven. Oh, also, uh, at the beginning of our, uh, third election, whatever, I was presented by Lance, obtaining those vehicles, uh, the, uh, the, uh, police units or whatever, he told me he was bringing that up to my attention along with Chief Fix, uh, in case we wanted to, uh, get any vehicles, uh, to get that, to do two, a long list, to get on the bu- to get on the list or whatever, I, if he want, uh, some, some units for the next budget, then whatever, like that. So, I did, I told him, make it, oh, I ain't gonna say need, but I want my request free.
Three, three units?
Three, three units. So, um, prior to this, everything that, he updated me on everything that was going on, and that he needed to invoice by Friday.
So, for the three, you mean that you get?
Uh, the, the admin too.
Okay.
Per, uh, when I talked to Chief Fix, he also let me know that, uh, there were some people, they admin, that still haven't gotten, okay, you're in here. So, it's fine.
Is this three that you're telling me?
Just three.
Right, so, 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 just to clarify, uh, several months ago, we were notified by Jared Lane, that he wanted units upcoming year, that's it. So, I guess people both candidates at the time, and they both indicated they wanted three good units. Uh, unfortunately, uh, we had no other contact with Jared Lane other than today. We received an email saying they need appeal by Friday to include you in the order. Uh, obviously, we don't have any money budgeted, so we can't really do that, but I discussed with, uh, Chief Le, Mr., that he needed to notify you all of his intentions and, and kind of, because in order to get a budget, we've done, uh, you have to introduce it next week, and then go on to December. So, that's why this matters, for you presenting at this time.
Alright, appreciate it, man.
It's being as a state council.
Item number five, adjourned.
Public Works Committee, call to order, please. Establish a form. Road call.
Ms. Gordon.
Present, here.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Here.
Cool, present.
It's a long day, y'all. Okay, item number four, discuss the public service intent to change days of service by Mr. Joseph.
So, there's a, a handout in your packet, should be the second contract after the Providence, and, uh, the mayor received this on October twenty-nine. Oh, I said, there's a handout in your packet, you see the letter from the Public Services? The mayor received this on about October twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, in which they are exercising their right to alter the days of service, uh, to go into effect on Monday, November eighteen, twenty-twenty-four. And the new schedule is as indicated, Monday, Thursday will be garbage carts only on the levee side of the city, Tuesday, Friday will be garbage carts only on the track side of the city, Wednesday will be brush broom and recycle carts for the entire city, and Saturday will be the out of cart rear load for the entire city. And as you know, currently, the, the cart service is on Wednesday and Saturday, so that is just the, the basic change, instead of trying to do the entire city on two days, that I'm split the city in half.
And that's so we have to move on, huh?
That's just a notification, no, man, they, 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 they have the, uh, the option of changing the pickup schedule per their contract.
When I saw this was all the agenda item today, I pulled the contract to look at it, uh, when the city contracted with, with Republic, the actual pickup days are not specified in the contract, in other words, it wasn't contractually, it has to be this day or that day, it was just gonna be, you know, two days, uh, two days a week for, you know, regular residential. So, they, yeah, that, that's a section that they have attached, uh, to their letter, that is the, uh, that is the accurate and correct sections, uh, three point three, and as you can see, uh, in that section, the contract, you know, did allow us to, uh, change the routes, uh, which is the routes that they run, you know, in within the city, as well as change the, uh, the days of collection, uh, with at least two weeks of things notice. So, that's what they have done in this letter, uh, stated October twenty-nine, twenty-four, they're actually giving you more than two weeks notice, uh, you know, it's something that they're entitled to do under the contract.
They say pickup for two days throughout the day.
Off each side.
No, 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 I'm saying, say it again, and I have a contract.
They're, they're.
And it's only two days, but this four days.
One, one of the contracts. Obligates two days per resident, per, per, per address. So, some places you only get one trash collection per week. Port Allen's contract requires two trash collections, well, garbage collections per week. This is just changing the dates of those collections.
And the reason being?
I imagine that it, it, it's, it's, it's to accommodate scheduling on their behalf, uh, you know, when you, when you're negotiating these types of contracts, it's, it's difficult to, 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 to get a contractor to agree to, to, to a static date, you know, and they'll, they'll give you two collections in four weeks period, but to tell them you have to do it on this date or that date, it, it kinda, it, it, it doesn't allow any flexibility in terms of, you know, them meeting their, their obligations from staff standpoints, from equipment standpoints, from landfill trips and the like, I mean, currently, they try to do the entire city on two days, the same two days, and I think we've seen some issues that I think have, uh, you know, arisen as a result of trying to do it all on the same two days. I personally think this may be better for the constituents, you know, they only have half the, you know, a portion of the city to do on each collection, or each two collection day, so it, it should, to provide better service, um, but that's, that's the, 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 the gist.
It makes sense if they do run into an issue on Monday, they'll, they'll be back in town too, to pick up where they left off.
Correct.
They lost a lot more than that.
Correct.
But I'm looking at the division part of it. Okay, like, okay, what if, it, it may, it, it end up being some future issues, like if maybe we pick up on track side, and then pick up on the levee side, and, you know, and maybe like, oh, they're picking up on this side, and they got picked up on this side, and they finish this side, and it's coming back, you know, like, it just seems like they could cause some divide then. And if we trying to deny being a wide divide.
Well, on the one half, on the one hand, the contract allows me to, to, to set the dates, the days, okay? Um, on the other hand, uh, like Mr. Le indicated, you're, you're gonna have a truck on Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday, Friday. So, rather than have a situation as is, with a Wednesday collection and a Saturday collection, there's gonna be a truck the following day, under the regular schedule.
More opportunity.
To, right, to, to pick up where any, I guess, you know, issues arise that caused them not to finish the route. That stated, Ms., Ms. Lacy, you can't regulate everything, and some things, I, I, some things are gonna just happen, and, 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 and unfortunately.
Like that contract just happened, right?
No, what, no, no, that contract didn't just happen, it, it's, okay, so, 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 the more, the more, the more requirements.
Position we done negotiation, like, I feel like we should be more positioned, what we done.
But you don't, you don't, okay, let me, let me, let me.
Because I think that Republic has had many opportunities.
Every time Republic comes up with any particular issue, and I would just say this, when Republic first came back to the city of Port Allen, they were the only contractor. So, under those circumstances, you don't.
He's correct. Say, what, he only was having two days, our contract was better than the, the pairs.
It's better than a lot of areas, uh, two days is not the norm anymore.
Right, it's just one day.
Most, most people do one collection per week.
So, we was good to get two days.
But, but that's stated, it's, it's, the more requirements that you expect, the more costs you're gonna have associated with the contractor that wants to bid on those services. They were the only bidder, and if you tell them, well, yeah, we'll, 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 it has to be Monday and Thursday, then you can, you can definitely approach the negotiation from that standpoint, but you're gonna cost, it's gonna cost you, if they don't have some flexibility, because just like everybody in here can get sick or have car trouble or any particular issue, they have those same issues. And they, and they're amplified, because they're having to do this for more than just one customer, one client. So, I, you know, I'm not gonna say that the contract was, was, was poorly, you know, negotiated, I think that it, it's a common practice to allow flexibility in setting the dates or the days, because we're, we have no knowledge or information as to what their scheduling is and what their, uh, what, what, what factors, you know, determine whether or not they can meet their obligation on any particular day, because anything could happen on any, at any given time. So, you know, here's the thing, and, and I've said this before.
I'm just, I'm just, like, we're just looking at it on.
I understand.
I'm starting to look at it on all levels too, like, now, maybe like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, versus just two days, you have less population, because now you don't have the whole parish, it's already the trucks riding on the road, messing the roads up, now you're on the road four days, in two days. I, I'm just, just looking at, but hey.
Okay, look, and, and guess what? You, you, you also wanna have a truck that's responsible for less collections. So, if you have this Wednesday and Saturday, you have the truck that's gonna have half the collection, so that you, we can. Add it for nine.
The thing is, there was a contract agreement between us and Republic that they, it would be a two-day pickup, Mondays and Wednesdays and Saturdays. Uh, they changed, the only thing they changed during, uh, during the term of the contract was the actual trash pickup on Saturday, they were doing this. So, we've been having this contract since, uh, the beginning, but they, they had said days that they was supposed to pick up. I told Mr. Smith that I disagree with this, because he never brought before the council, the decision made by Republic on their own, instead of presenting to us before they made that decision. So, my thing is to invite them to the council meeting next week, whatever questions y'all have regarding it, that's the time that y'all gonna vote on it, y'all can ask any question concerning, uh, this new, new schedule. It benefits you in the way, but the other thing that it doesn't benefit is that I know Republic, on holidays, if the holiday falls on a pickup, you, they're not coming the next day, it's gonna be the next pickup day.
It is.
So, I heard y'all mention that, yeah, they don't have the next day to do pickup, the whole city, unless that's in the contract. So, that's something that you can ask them, you know, when they come, uh, next week. But anytime there was a holiday on a pickup day, the next day they did pick up garbage was being the next garbage pickup day.
And you said, like, the contract that they agreed to Monday was, like, implied, it kinda was, or is it?
Yeah, we agreed to that, in fact, uh, when they, the focus was the, the contract, uh, days, and that said days was Wednesdays, the current days that we had with Progressive when we switched from Progressive, it stayed the same, and the, uh, the recycle was on Fridays, and the trash pickup was on Saturdays, and then, I think this past term, they changed the trash pickup to Wednesdays, but everything else still stayed the same, Wednesday's, uh, garbage pickup, and Saturday's garbage pickup, and Friday recycle. But this new plan that they have, uh, is gonna be Monday, Wednesday, and coming the garbage pickup, and then trash pickup again is on, I think it's.
It's Monday, Thursday garbage on one side, Tuesday, Friday garbage on the other side.
One side this way, one side.
And then Wednesday, brush, boom, boom, and recycle carts, and Saturday, out of cart rear load.
And usually, out of cart rear loads, so those, like, the residents that live on Dead End Street, where the boom truck can get to, some of that issue.
I think it's a good deal, I mean, um.
Yeah, I know, I guarantee.
The only thing, like I said, the only thing wrong is that on Mondays is supposed to be your holidays, that we actually.
Maybe like, like you say, asking that question when they come next week.
The contract only mentions three.
Three holidays.
That's correct, yeah, section three point four, you're three holidays of New Year's Day, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day.
But then we got more of the, yeah.
But they shouldn't be. They shouldn't be.
Hey, if they do this, I mean, if they do this, couple, if I was communicating, I'm pretty sure they have, you know.
Just cut across the line.
Yeah, I'm just communicating, I think they'll be, uh.
And I think, I think the city would like it better this way too, this nigga getting two days, and they know that what they, they are, instead of, I didn't know they was picking up the whole Port Allen on the, the days, I thought it was split days anyway, so I think this would be better for trash pickup on this side, it don't matter what side it is, as long as they getting trash picked up.
I would fall for the code, with the trucks you have, they get across.
Yeah.
We try, I feel like that's a lot of issues, so, so.
So, I think that's a good, I think that's a big.
That's about what y'all gonna ask them next Wednesday. My job.
My ass, Evan, I mean, it says residential, uh, collection. We can ask him a little bit around your final say-so, so we just, yeah.
To me, this would be a, uh, like a notification, like this is, they're exercising the right under the contract to do this, and, uh, obviously, there needs to be some push out to your constituents in the city, uh, to inform them about the change of dates.
Also, just automatically going to?
Then they have the right under the contract.
With, with, with sufficient notice.
With sufficient notice, which they didn't provide.
Provided that, you know, and, and you, you, you just, just, we gotta keep in mind that at the time, of the contract, they had a larger area than just the city. So, we try to be a good partner and coordinate, so that, you know, they can take advantage of certain efficiencies as well, that benefits everybody on both sides of the bill, so. Due to the fact that they will have, they have been changes in that, that relationship.
Should be less capone?
It should be, it should be, but we'll see, we shall see.
I mean, I don't think it's a problem what side get picked up on what day, whatever, long as they're gonna pick it up.
Item number five, adjourned.
Community Development Committee, call to order, number two establish form, and three, roll call. Mr. Brown, here.
Ms. Lacy.
Mr. Hope.
Here. All right, item number four, discuss abandonment of South Twelve Street right of way at Avenue G, Mr. Adrian.
Thank you, Brandon, um, this was something that I touched on last month, uh, as it turned out, I didn't have all the information that I needed. I'll kinda explain, um, told it back in, I guess, the mid-nineteen eighties, so forty years ago. For those that may remember, there was a swimming pool at the, at the end of, I guess, the more south end of, um, South Twelve, which took up like fifty feet of that, of that right of way, and there's the Dead End, it took up another fifty feet, where the swimming pool was, when it closed, the city apparently abandoned that front, that, that fifty feet, there where the swimming pool was. Well, once the city abandoned that, the property was donated to the Terrio family, and, and I think it was in two thousand eighteen, the Terrio family, so as of now, you have Miss, uh, Miss Gloria Wright lives, I guess it would be on the east side of the South Twelve Dead End, Mr. Raymond Crader lives on the west side. Well, the property where the swimming pool was, that was in possession of the Terrio family, was, uh, documentation from the clerical court, and I can get it to y'all if you want it, was donated to the Wright family, and everything signed, it's recorded at the, uh, but the other fifty feet, for whatever, like we had talked last month, was never, um, was, was never abandoned, or it was never recorded at, at the clerical court's office. So, what I wanna, what I'm trying to get done now, and I've been emailing back and forth the last just a little bit, was, is to, for the city to abandon the Dead End part, and have it donated to Mr. Crader and his family, and he, he does understand, as do the Wrights, the Wright family, that the city still maintains the, the privilege or the right to access the back of the property if there's any maintenance that we need to do. So, um, they both, both families understand that, the Wrights, you know, are, are fine, they know they donated the fifty feet where the swimming pool was, Mr. Crader, uh, I wanna have the, the fifty feet where the Dead End is, uh, donated to him. So, that's kinda where we are, I have the documentation, Lance, Evan, I mean, do I need to make copies of this and present it to you, 'cause I don't wanna, you know, um, step, step over. Have the information, so I can make copies of it, and.
Or, or give it to the mayor, and he can submit it to the city hall.
I, I don't exactly remember Miss Gloria bought the house from the Terrios, but I think that side lot remained, um, it was, you know, under ownership of the Terrios, that, it, it says on it, uh, shoot, it, it was in two thousand eighteen, okay, April thirteenth of two thousand eighteen, it was recorded at, uh, the clerical court's office where it was doned, it was donated from, uh, the Terrios to, uh, Miss Gloria Wright. So, that's all, and the tax records, Miss Gloria, you know, she's been making property taxes on it, so it's, it's hers, and I'm just trying to get it to where, uh, the fifty feet where the Dead End exists, is, you know, donated to the Crader family, so.
So, why are we donating to them?
No, she said she's fine, she, she said, heck, I got, I got donated to me where the swimming pool was, used to be, it's kinda only fair for Mr. Crader to get the, get the other part of that.
We would not be able to donate all of it to one side, uh, what would happen is, we don't technically donate it to anybody, right? The city would be doing is abandoning, uh, that, that portion of the right of way, if you will, and then you pretend like there's a center line there, like state statute, one half is gonna go to the property owner, uh, on each contiguous side of, of the, uh, you know, of the roadway that be abandoned, if you will. So, you know, if the city abandons it, uh, that's what, that's all the city could do, have to, uh, the Creedor family, the Wright family, now, from there, uh, the Wright family could donate to their, their half back to, uh, the Creedor family, that's fine, you know, once, once it goes off, once the city goes off, you know, it, it becomes private property, they can do anything they want with it, of course, subject though to the city maintaining, uh, a servitude over that area, so they would never be able to build anything permanent, uh, that would obstruct that right of way. But we, 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 we would not be able to just donate one, the whole fifty foot.
So, between now and next Wednesday, if we make this an agenda item for next week, between now and next Wednesday, you know, I'll take it upon myself to go meet with both fam, you know, both families again, and explain what you just said. Yeah.
Okay, we understand.
We can do that, and, um, so, but I would, Rose, I would like to have, you know, an agenda, I guess, be almost like a tentative agenda item for next week, in case I can get on my ducks. Okay? Thank you, Brandon.
All right, uh, item number five, update community president, add two, this is Mr. Rose, or should?
Oh, how's it going, Bruce, Kevin Brown, everybody, good evening, uh, as we get close to the end of our calendar year, uh, the city and the parish have a lot of events going on, but I think our big event that we look forward to, of course, is our senior citizens' dinner, uh, which is getting our information out to try to get our donations in, because normally, other than the entertainment, it's a, um, we'll have more information next week, uh, but it will be normally the third week in December, so other than that, that's all I basically have, you know, we're kinda busy just winding down the year. Okay, any questions?
Our question, number, uh, number six, adjourned. Call the Personnel Committee to order, could establish a form, could we have the road call, please?
Mr. Hope.
Here.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Ms. Le.
Here.
President.
All right, item number four, handle no business, we got.
My ass, committee, item number one, to order, item number two, establish a form, item number three, roll call.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Mr. Hope.
Here.
Here.
Item number four, discuss pest check, L A T, annual pest control review.
Yes, you have a, a, a handout, with their proposal to, um, provide pest control services, to do all of the facilities, city hall, and the maintenance, uh, the ways we ought to treat the facility. It's, it's essentially the same amount as last year's contract, that twenty-two, twenty-three, to, uh, take effect next month. Well, this one, November thirteenth through, through twenty-four through November thirteen, twenty-twenty-five. I believe we had, for, say.
No, I don't have it.
Well, I mean, previously, but I think it was substantially more than this particular, I don't know, so, um, but other than that, we. The mayor wanted to present the, uh, renewal. For your consideration next week, I suppose. Any questions?
Yeah, I don't know.
Hey, you want, did you like the moment? Hmm?
Clearly, this is item twenty-two. Item number five, discuss contract with Providence Engineering for twenty-twenty-four municipal, uh, separate storm sewer system, M S four compliance assistance.
Yeah, this is a, a annual report that is due to the state of Louisiana, Providence. They're doing it directly, so this is a contract to update that report and, uh, coordinate with the state. The mayor would like that as an agenda item, consideration next week. Authorize signing the contract and undertaking that estimate of sixteen thousand, eight, and fifty dollars.
Item number five, item number six, discuss city council salary increases. Great.
Uh, yeah, we, we talked about it a few, a few weeks, a few months ago, I was just bringing it up on the agenda, uh, before, uh, you know, the new look council began, the new council left again, uh, you know, just open conversation, only two of us up here tomorrow still actually, uh, be here, so, any thoughts around?
What, what increase are y'all looking at, what was the increase? Did you get a part, any figures?
When I spoke, I spoke to, uh, another council person, it was after their, their population was much bigger, uh, but the number we are at currently, I mean, they were getting, they were getting, uh, I think twelve hundred a month for, uh, their expenses, or their works was twelve hundred a month, I want to say, they might have been around that, and I'm not familiar with the parish council, you know.
There's twelve, next to sixteen hundred.
It's up.
I'm worried. If it's in the budget, if it's in the budget.
Well, who can work on it? I got nothing, I got nothing.
Come on now, be fair.
I, I wouldn't be able to, um.
Be fair. Even though you never be fair.
We had discussed that before, before the election.
Yes.
No matter what the results were.
Right.
Uh, but. At the end of the day, with y'all, it's still, um.
I can give out. And really, even if I were to have been reelected, uh, my thought has always been, think I'm fine with a thousand, whatever, a thousand dollars a month, I don't need any more than that, because.
Yeah, because you got two jobs already, and you're a child three times. But I'm saying, but I'm just saying, I'll say that, because you don't need them, and we don't need it.
I'm not saying I don't need it, I'm saying we're classified as public servants, that's what, that's the title, we're always, so it's a servant.
And I think we have a little plans, public service, they're gone.
But that, y'all, y'all asked my thoughts, that's my thoughts, so.
If I were to address, a good evening, everyone. Not saying, it's nothing y'all should. But what I will say is to make things, I guess, move a little slower. See if we can do this at the beginning of the next fiscal year. And that way it can be, yeah, take effect in the next fiscal year, that way it can be put into the budget, and we don't have to worry about where we're going to get.
We don't know where the money comes from anyway, so it's time.
So, yeah, I think, oh, what's the thing?
I have two questions for Evan. One, if we do put this off to the next fiscal year, isn't that violation of state law that they can't give the, draw the term that they're in office? And the second thing, I thought their stipends or salary, or whatever you want to call it, was second ordinance. So if we're going to do it, we have to have the introduction of the ordinance. Ordinance, yeah, the December year. And that was communicated to Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
When he made the request.
It would be by ordinance, uh, I don't think the salary, the salary, I don't think council members have been codified in the book of ordinances, but I guess there's an ordinance that was, that was adopted some other time that sets forth the, uh, the salaries for the council members. Uh, I was trying to do some quick research, uh, we know for sure that you can't decrease, uh, your own salary, uh, within a term. Uh, the issue is. The same term, or do you have to increase it and then wait till, uh, another election takes place before the raise could, uh, take place? We're going to firm up that research this week, uh, but my understanding, just as I sit here today, is that you could, uh, increase it, uh, immediately. You cannot decrease it immediately, but you could increase it immediately, again, we'll have that research, uh, firmed up before next week. Uh, so I want to say we've looked at this for some other people as well, and there's some, uh, age opinion still there that have, uh, supported that.
So you say next week, so would it be on the agenda, or you just going to look it up and verify it for us, or what?
I mean, you can put it on the agenda, uh, and either way, I mean, regardless of whether it's going to take effect immediately or after the election, I mean, you can still vote on it, you know, the only thing that will be in legal limbo is whether it would be effective immediately or not.
And where's the money?
But they, they can honor it.
Once it's sworn in.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're talking about the new, the new vote, so. They would be voting on it, uh, introducing it in, in November, voting on it, uh, in December, uh, that wouldn't be, that would still be in the current term here, so the issue is, I mean, really, it's coming up against that point anyway, so it's probably not going to matter anyway, but, uh, but at the end of the day, it'll only affect maybe one month, uh, but again, we'll, we'll look at it, but, uh, I think there's a, a good argument that, you know, even if they did increase it in December, you could get the benefit of it in December, uh, and without it having to go to next, uh, the, the, the term of the next quarter, if you will. But we will do some look at that.
Let's go.
And also, I'm. Throw another wrinkle into your question, you got to bring me also, you got other elected officials who also is in the same category as you, that's including the mayor, the chief of police, the clerk, the city judge, and the city marshal, so you have to consider all of those, if you're going to consider a raise for yourself.
We, yeah, there raises anyway, we don't get none.
Everything, everything's there.
They have a nice salary, that's paid, so about both of this town, I mean, they do have some nice salaries, so, I would say that.
Move down.
Okay. Essential data discussion. Again, I, since y'all always want to.
We can't say no more than what they say already.
A dollar on how for sure.
Um, item number seven, discuss transfer of fifty-eight thousand dollars from the wastewater treatment, they've been to the system improvement, of seventy-two thousand, eighty-six thousand invoice for inflow pump repairs already completed.
And I sent the proposed budget to the CPA office, I had one there for wastewater, four hundred thousand in capital outlay. When the budget was approved, it was not on there, and I did not get it. So we've got some repairs that, we have fifty-eight thousand dollars in capital outlay that we were going to buy a truck, with, um, the wastewater department is going to buy a truck, and we put fifty-eight thousand dollars in there. So we're asking to transfer this fifty-eight thousand from the use of purchasing a truck to pay for this, um, what's this invoice? And they're going to have to probably give a budget amendment for the remainder.
For the time being.
So just asking that y'all.
Repairs already done, don't they?
Yeah.
So there's some better than.
Okay, item number eight, discuss authorization merely to pay an additional ten thousand dollars over the quoted amount for the six street water well repair. Uh, Mr. Two, Mayor.
Uh, council, what this is, is that, uh, running, what is it, running?
Grinder.
Grinder, process, pump services, they, uh, repaired the six street, uh, water. Well, uh, several months ago, and during the course of that repair, uh, they had a issue with a blowout, and that resulted in additional expenses other than the, the quoted amount, which was forty-seven, not forty-seven thousand, and additional cost to repair the, the blowout at that particular well costs an additional ten thousand dollars, so we had to get your lessons to go pay your, your rent down, so that, that, uh, we pay our costs.
Item number five, for they please. Item number nine, monthly financial update, Mr. Two.
Everybody should have a recording, one of them, um. Just saying I'm just, you received it. Um, I do want to bring your attention to something that I noticed today, and I am going to look into it and have, I guess, uh, results of my research, animal control. We look like we are at almost fifty percent of animal control, and I'm not sure why that is. So I am going to.
First place. Is that one?
Yeah. Yeah. We got fifty percent there, so I'm not sure what is going up.
Many cats, they got run around on those, I don't know what animal control is doing. Not picking up some stray cats, I don't know that yet.
I do know that it's divided, um, within West Baton Rouge, or between all the city titles, so I'm not. We're just doing what we pay us, but I will have to answer for you next week.
Well, you just got a service? Huh? It says right down between the city.
Yeah. It's divided, um, between Ruby Addis, Parish, uh, we all pay a portion of animal control. And of course, with the repairs to the, um, sewer treatment, wastewater, you know, that budget is escalating. What do you extend your truth on that, escalating?
Are there any questions? Yeah, pause. I, I will, um, what it was. Okay, um. Item, um, ten, adjourned.
Don't have a call here, so, uh, if you might have a recommendation or something, if I can.
If y'all were talking about sewer, I guess I could just tell you the state of the, you know, the repairs and all, all that stuff, because, yeah, it's, obviously, I'll spend a lot of money on it, and it is unplanned things, but I will say, none of it was, uh, like a selective decision, you basically had to do all these repairs. The, uh, of course, the pump station, you had to collapse. You had a contract just to replace one pump and do some controls, uh, changes, and then, uh, unfortunately, outside of the pump station, which was not in the contract, the manhole collapsed and the pipes on both sides, that had been repaired. Then the, the one good pump in the station before the new pump was put in, uh, messed up, cracked out, and it's actually at the shop right now to get rebuilt, but unlike the, uh, a lot of the other pumps, it only needs like major bearings and stuff, so it's not super, should be done. And I think y'all used space for most of that kind of work, they'll be reinstalling it. Uh, if y'all recall, at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, the inflow pump station, you had four pumps, only one worked, we took the three out, sent them to get rebuilt, they have been rebuilt, they just put them back in, they haven't hooked up electrical, but fingers crossed, by the end of November, uh, instead of having, I guess, uh, two working out of six pumps, we'll have all of them working. And hopefully, last a while. Questions, which it was like, and I'm sure it's a budget nightmare, but it's not like you could decide not to do that, so. Thank y'all.